Hi, everyone. We'll start probably in just a minute. I think we're waiting on Eric.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Ah, miracles happen.
We can hear you. Yes.
I think we're still waiting on Eric.
Is Eric out there in space?
He was on, I thought, before. He may have tried. This is my second try, and it worked the second time.
He's off, too.
Hi, Catherine. I see you have a new book out. She can't hear me.
Hi, Tom.
Tom has his speaker off.
Eric Miller, is that you with a mask on? There you go. You're alone. You don't have to have it on.
Is every tower, Richard, turn on his speakerphone?
Hey, Tom.
Yeah.
You can hear me?
Yeah.
This Kent.
I don't see Ken. Ken who? Oh, Kent Seavey.
Yeah.
I don't see you anywhere on the screen here.
I'll be there someday.
I see a, I see a, yeah, I don't even see your name. Hi, Kent. Good to hear your voice.
Here, how do you?
Marty.
Looks like we're still waiting for Eric Dyer.
Yeah.
Our distinguished leader. Who's Marty?
Eric is logging on right now.
Okay.
Whoa, there's Eric.
Eric.
There he is. Unmute.
Hi, there. Sorry, I couldn't find the link.
December 9th.
We are all here. One second.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order then for the Historic Resources Board Regular Meeting for Monday, December 21st. Roll call, please.
Yes, Jordan Crowman.
Here.
Catherine Gaultieri. Catherine?
You can't hear.
Oh, she's on, she's on mute. Okay. Carol Hall?
Here.
Thomas Hood?
Here.
Eric Dyer.
Here. Okay, thank you. Okay, we are now moving to extraordinary business, which is the appointment of the Chair and Vice Chair for calendar year 2021. And I have been Chair a long time, so feel like Vice Chair has done a great job, and I will go ahead and nominate Thomas as the Chair for next year.
I'll second that.
Okay, and then do we have a nomination? Should we do it all at once, Margie?
No, you should do each of them separately.
Okay, so we have a nomination and a second. Any other nominations or?
How about you, Eric? Do you want four more years?
I think I'm, well, I think it's every year, so I'm fine passing the baton.
You don't have to.
But, yeah, I'll be, I might be Vice Chair, but I'm happy to pass the baton to Thomas, so I'll go ahead and call for the role. We have a nomination for Thomas Hood to be Chair of HRB for 2021. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No opposed? Thomas, look forward to your leadership next year.
Thank you. I'll do my best to perform as well as you have and call you for advice.
I'm out this year. So Vice Chair is?
More call for nominations for Vice Chair?
Yeah. Nominations for Vice Chair? Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Eric Dyer.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your trust.
It's convenient.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, that's fine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Thomas Hood chaired, Eric Dyer Vice Chair for next year. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, Eric.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, on to public appearances. Is there anyone attending the meeting that would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda, may do so now? Hearing none. I will move on to announcements. Any announcements that need to be done at this time? Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to the consent agenda, and we have minutes from the November 16th meeting. Any comments on those minutes?
None here. None.
I move to adopt the minutes.
Our second.
Okay, and we have, we have one more thing on the agenda. We can?
Yeah, adopt the consent calendar.
We're not, yeah, well, let's look at the other item on the consent calendar. Oops, which is the adoption of the calendar for 2021. So we have a special meeting because of, I think, Guess Martin Luther King Day on January 25th. And then President's Day has to be rescheduled to February 22nd. So has everyone had a chance to review that? Does anyone have conflicts with any of those at this time?
No. Not at this time.
Okay. And I will, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, adopt the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Jordan seconds. Roll call, please.
Yes, Jordan Crowman?
Yes, aye.
Aye, thank you. Catherine Gaultieri?
Aye.
Carol Hall?
Aye.
Thomas Hood?
Aye.
Eric Dyer?
Yes. Okay, we're now moving on to orders of business, and the first item, and only item, is DS 19298 Carmelo for Northwest of Ocean. Consideration of a determination of consistency with the Secretary of Interior Standards for the treatment of historic properties. For the conversion of a bedroom on the front northeast portion of the residence to an attached garage, and the remodel of several windows, doors, and two rear gables of the residence listed on the city's historic inventory and located in the R1 zoning district. I would just say, just as full disclosure, I did have conversations with the Salamis at one point, but I just wanted to disclose that, and but I'm prepared to stay and hear the application. So staff report, please.
Catherine, before we start, can we just have everybody that's not talking go on mute? There's a lot of background noise, so that's always helpful.
Sure, okay. And then let me, before I share my screen, can everybody hear me? Okay, all right, one moment. All right, so the site is a 6,600 square foot lot, and it's developed with the historic William Posey Silva, Silva House, constructed in 1914. The residence is historically significant under California Register Criterion 2 for its association with the life of renowned artist William Posey Silva, who is listed in the city's historic context statements, and he was known as Carmel's brand old man of brush and needle. The residence is also significant under Criterion 3 as a good example of the craftsman architectural style, and it's under the theme of architectural development in Carmel. From the year it was built in 1914 to the year of Silva's passing in 1948. The property was placed on the city's historic inventory very recently this year and is currently used as a single-family residence. According to the Phase 1 and Phase 2 Historic Evaluation by the city's historic consultant Margaret Clovis, the property's character-defining features include the building's craftsman-style board and batten siding, knee braces, wide overhanging eaves, low pitched hip and gable roof system, and all of its original windows. Its U shapes and its U-shaped front elevation plan with enclosed front patio, and its shed dormer roof elements on the front. According to Ms. Clovis's Phase 2 report, the Silva House has been remodeled several times over the years, which has principally affected the interior spaces. The kitchen was remodeled in 1948. In 1973, additions were built on the south elevation and northwest corner. In 1993, the garage and basement on the rear west elevation were converted into an accessory dwelling unit. Ms. Clovis finds that most changes were confined to the rear and secondary elevations, leaving the integrity of the front intact. The applicant has submitted a new design study application proposing the conversion of the front north bedroom into a garage, the demolition and reconstruction of the historic front fence, the removal of an existing altered chimney, and construction of a new chimney on the front, or on the, sorry, the rear western roof slope. The replacement of 12 out of 24 windows and several doors, and the replacement of the wood shake roof with a new wood shake roof, the alteration of two gables on the rear elevation, and a new outdoor stone fireplace, gas fire pit grill, and a new hot tub. A Phase 2 Historic Assessment has been prepared by the city's historic consultants, and the board is being asked to review the proposed modifications and issue a determination of consistency with the Secretary of the Interior Standards. In regard to the proposal to confront the front northeast bedroom into a garage, the Secretary of the Interior Standards, number nine, states new additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction shall be, or will not, will not destroy the historic materials, features, and spatial relationships that characterize the property. The new work shall be differentiated from the old and will be compatible with the historic materials, features, size, scale, and proportion and massing of the original residence. The garage was located originally under the first level of the house on the rear elevation, and it was accessed via a driveway located on the neighboring property to the south, which also belonged to Mr. Silva. However, the south lot was later sold to a different owner, and the setback along the south side became three foot seven and three feet on the north side, which does not provide sufficient space for a vehicle to access the rear of the property. And so in 1993, the original garage and the lower floor were converted into a subordinate unit. The conversion of the front northeast bedroom into a garage would require the removal of an original multi-painted wood window and a section of board and batten siding on the front elevation. Ms. Clovis's report states that, according to ITS Bulletin 295, there are some historic buildings in which it may be possible to convert a portion of the interior for parking without negatively impacting their historic character. While the front elevation of the north wing will be altered, the south wing, which matches the design of the north wing and contains an identical window, will remain unaltered to provide a surviving example. Ms. Clovis's report finds that since there is no possibility of constructing the new garage at the rear in its original location, the conversion of the bedroom into a garage is compatible with the historic residence and will ensure the efficient use of the property by providing enclosed parking. Staff supports the conversion of the front north bedroom into a garage. In regard to the new garage door, the new garage door will be wood board and batten with six square glass lights at the top. Staff has drafted condition of approval number two reflecting Ms. Clovis's requirement that its board and batten siding be differentiated from the original. The applicant has provided revised plans complying with Ms. Clovis's condition. The board and button with, is proposed to be 10 and a half inches, which is slightly wider than the original eight and a fourth to 10 and one fourth width boards. And the battens on the new garage door will be three and a half wide, while the original are two and three fourths to three inches wide. The only siding replacement included in the scope of work consists of patching the siding at the removed chimney and filling in a nonoriginal French door in the south building wing at the front courtyard. And so staff has drafted condition of approval number three reflecting that no other siding replacement is authorized by this application. In regard to the front fence, Secretary of the Interior Standard, number two, states that the removal of distinctive materials or alteration of features, spaces, and spatial relationships that characterize the property will be avoided. Standard three states that each property will be recognized as a physical record of its time, place, and use. Changes that create a false sense of historical development, such as adding conjectural features, will not be undertaken. Standard five states that distinctive materials, features, finishes, and construction techniques, or examples of craftsmanship that characterize the property, will be preserved. And then standard 10 states that new construction will be undertaken in such a manner that if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and environment would be unimpaired. So the applicant is proposing to demolish and reconstruct the front fence with slightly different dimensions. According to Ms. Clovis, while the front fence is not a character-defining feature, it was designed to be an integral part of the landscape, and it's a direct reference to the fenestration on the front elevation. And it's an important distinctive feature of the Silva House's setting. The applicant states it is both convenient and necessary to replace the entire fence, since it would be very difficult to join the new fence panels at the driveway to the original fence at the same height, because the grade under the fence has changed over time, and there's now a gap under the original fence. The installation of a new fence would allow the fence to be adjusted to the current grade and constructed level and consistent with the other portions of the fence. While Ms. Clovis found the replacement of a 10-foot section of the front fence at the driveway consistent with the Secretary's standards, she finds the replacement of the entire fence inconsistent with Standards 2, 3, 5, and 10, stating that removal of the fence due to grade change is not justifiable, as it does not preserve and retain the historic character of the property. Replacing the original fence with a reproduction is essentially adding a conjectural feature to the landscape. In addition, the standards only allow reconstruction if the original feature is not extant. The standards recommend protecting and maintaining a site, site features by surveying and documenting areas where the terrain will be altered to determine the potential impact to important landscape features such as fences. Failing to take the step to minimize damage, or in this case outright removal of the feature, is not appropriate and will impair the landscape. Ms. Clovis recommends that only a 10-foot wide portion of the fence at the driveway be removed and not replaced with any driveway gate. The section of the fence that is removed can be salvaged and stored for later future use in the event that any portion of the original fence requires repair or replacement. So condition of approval number four reflects this requirement. According to Standard 6, deteriorated historic features will be repaired rather than replaced. While the severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, the new feature will match the old in design, color, texture, and where possible, materials. So the majority of existing windows on the residence are unclad wood, and a few have aluminum clad on the rear. The applicant is proposing to add or replace 12 windows with new solid paint aluminum clad wood windows. The French doors added in 1973 or 1993, one of the two remodels on the south side of the interior courtyard on the front, are proposed to be removed, and the wall will be patched with board and batten siding. Both the north and south elevations have been altered. As can be seen on this set of plans, this is one of the original, well, these are the 1973 plans, but it shows a new addition at the rear on the south side and along the whole south side. The front building element, and then in addition, all along the north side as well. So the windows that are being proposed along those sides will not disturb the original historic fabric of the building. Let's see, both, let's see, so both the north and south elevations have been altered. In 1973, a new closet and rear addition were added along the north side, and a new addition was added along the south side. So let's see. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing board and batten enclosed front chimney to create a new kitchen pantry and patch the wall with new board and batten siding. According to Ms. Clovis's report, the existing chimney was, was constructed, is altered, and it was originally constructed of uncoarse rubble and can be removed consistent with Standard number 2. Let's see. And let's see, the, oh, I guess the condition is that provided that the siding on the new chimney be differentiated from the original siding, and so this is incorporated as condition of approval number 2. And then, let's see. On the lower, on the north side elevation, three new solid paint casement windows will be added, and three new solid paint windows will be added also to the south side. The north windows and then the south windows. On the lower floor west elevation, the nonoriginal French doors are proposed to be replaced with three large windows. On the upper level, windows on the, on the master bedroom and dining room will be changed to a fixed plate glass, and triangular windows will be installed in the gables. The existing rear windows were installed in 1973 and 1993. At the upper floor deck, the applicant is proposing to replace the existing 1974 railing with a new glass railing. According to Ms. Clovis's reports, this change does not alter any historic materials that characterize the property, and these modifications are consistent with the, with Standard number 6. Actually, there was one more. The pitch of the two rear gables will be centered to increase the height by eight inches. And they will not, they're on the rear, and they're not visible from the front. Ms. Clovis finds that since the west elevation was altered in the remodels in 1973 and 1993, the addition of the roof ridges will not destroy historic materials. In regard to the new driveway, new retaining walls will be constructed in the right-of-way perpendicular to the streets, replacing existing retaining walls to install a new driveway. The city's residential design guidelines recommend a driveway width of nine feet to 10 feet and no larger than is necessary to access the garage. According to Ms. Clovis's report, new construction should be designed to be as unobtrusive as possible and should retain the historic relationship between the building and the landscape, including landscape features. The existing right-of-way consists mostly of landscaping, and staff recommends that the new driveway be limited to 10 feet in width to maintain a natural landscape appearance. So condition of approval number 6 reflects this requirement. Condition of approval number 7 requires the applicant to obtain approval of a permanent encroachment permit prior to design study approval, or to modify the driveway to eliminate curves or retaining walls in the right-of-way. Let's see, finally, the applicant is proposing to construct a new nine foot four inch tall, nine foot wide outdoor stone fireplace with adjacent six foot tall stone wall located three feet from the property line in the northwest rear yard. A new outdoor gas fire pit grill and spa are also proposed in the rear yard. Ms. Clovis's report does not address these exterior rear, rear yard changes. The proposed stone layout for the fireplace is consistent with the city's residential design guidelines. The proposed outdoor fireplace, fire pit, and spa are not visible on the front primary elevation. And the DPR form states that the upstairs deck overlooks a landscaped garden, and the new fireplace, gas fire pit, grill, and spa will not alter this, this description. Staff finds that the proposed alterations to the rear yard will not be detrimental to the historic character of the property. And so staff's recommendation is that the board adopt a resolution issuing a determination of consistency with the Secretary of the Interior Standards, associated with design study DS 19298. For the conversion of a front bedroom to an attached garage, alterations to several windows, doors, and two rear gables, and the removal of an original chimney. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Catherine. Any questions of Catherine on the application?
One quick question. Right way in front, permanent encroachment. Retaining walls on either side of the drive, correct? And if so, what's the material?
So, wait, sorry, can you repeat? A permanent encroachment and retaining, yeah, essentially, yes, the permanent encroachment is required to install the retaining walls in the front of the property.
What's the material of retaining walls?
Oh, I'm not certain about that. I think we'll be looking at that later in the process, but maybe Eric Miller can respond to that when it's his turn to speak.
And they, Ms. Clovis didn't say anything about the existing brick on the approach? And they, Meg Clovis didn't say anything about the existing brick on the approach?
No, she did not. She didn't comment on, but, go ahead.
I was just saying, it looks newer, so I wouldn't think it was part of the original fabric of the of the house, but just curious.
She didn't include it in the report.
Okay. Any other questions of Catherine?
No.
Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant or applicants representative here?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Catherine, thank you very much. That was a very good analysis of our application. And so the only thing I want to let everyone know is I was very concerned that you were going to nominate me for the chair or vice chair. They kept using my name, so I'm very pleased that it was Eric Dyer and not me, so thank you. But anyway, so Catherine, one of the things that I would like to talk a little bit about, can you put up the slide showing the garage and how the gate works and everything like that? Yes, that was back, back one. I want to see the the plan, the site plan. No.
Give me one moment. Let's just go to the real plan. So this one?
There's a plan. Okay, so we're okay with not putting a gate back in, just taking the 10-foot opening and just letting that access the garage. But we do have dogs or she, they do have dogs. So if you look at this plan at a 90-degree angle to the garage, parallel with the driveway, we'd like to put a gate there so the dog just doesn't run out on the street. And I think it wouldn't be visible from the front elevation, but it would certainly work instead of a car gate. So the other thing that we would hope to do is put a small buoy on the side of the building, the north side of the building. There's a three-foot setback. If we had a gate there and a gate parallel with the driveway, then we'd be able to, you know, have the dogs run the property and not not get out in the street. So that was one of the things we wanted to talk about today. The other couple are just house cleaning. Basically, if you look at standard condition number one, just if you count the windows in the plan, there's actually 23 wood windows. And the 12 that we're talking about aren't replacement, they're addition. So I think it's just a matter of rewriting condition number one. And so just to be consistent with the plans. And then the other thing is on condition three, it says no other siding replacement is authorized, but we'd like to take the, there's plywood with bats on it and the additions to the south and to the west. We'd like to remove that plywood and put on real board and bat siding so it has more of an authentic feeling. Not nothing, I mean, the front elevation, of course, the only replacement of siding would be where the chimney was and where the old door was. But the 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 other elevations really, you know, plywood with bats on it is just not an authentic look. And I think that's all the comments we have on the conditions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else liking to address the board in this application? Okay, any questions of Mr. Miller by the board?
Yes, my my computer decided to disconnect me for a minute there and so I couldn't hear What is the material again that's being used on the retaining walls?
Oh, so the retaining wall material will be masonry. We still have to work it out with staff, right? There's still going to be some discussion relative to agreeing on the exact retaining walls, but we were, we were going to use masonry.
Okay, thanks, Carol. Any other questions of Eric? Okay, seeing none. And anyone else wishing to address this application before I close the public hearing? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to back to the board. Would like to start us off.
I have a question, Eric. So when you look at the front of the house and you're, we're removing, in order to put in the garage door, they're removing the old Japanese window, is there no way that you can, it would seem to me that would be very easy to incorporate that design into the garage door. And my question is, why are we not stipulating that?
I think, does staff want to respond to that? Or should, I can.
Well, I think, and really quick, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think, I think staff was just going with what Meg was recommending, but if it if it's consistent with the secretary standards to take something not original and some on a nonoriginal building element, then staff would be supportive of it, but that would be the question.
I guess I would make the comment simply that it it shouldn't really replicate exactly what is there. I can imagine it being inspired by what was there, but it, since it is a new element, I wouldn't want to have an existing historic element be placed in a new element and confusing, you know, what's new and old would be my only comment to that, Jordan.
Yeah, I mean, it just, I understand that, I mean, different materials or whatever, but I mean, it's a symmetrical view now and what what's going to happen is we're going to have a very asymmetrical view. And to me, the the garage door on the right-hand side is is significantly inconsistent with the details on the left-hand side. And so I, you know, I was kind of, my my question is, was there any thought, and I guess Catherine answered the question, you know, was there any thought to trying to echo that, maybe a new material or however to fit into the new door, to make it look less, I mean, to make it look more symmetrical and keep it with the original view of the home?
Okay, who was that? Sorry.
Never mind, I just.
I was, I can open up the public hearing and have the architect respond. Sure. Eric, do you want to respond to Jordan?
Yeah, the reason is that it has to be, it's not an overhead door because there's not a lot of height there. So we had to make it hinged on both sides and so it doesn't really work with the asymmetrical window that's there. I mean, I suppose we could make it, make the window more asymmetric or symmetrical by reducing the length of the windows on the sides, but then I think it feels a little forced. So that's, that's the problem that we have.
And if there were customized doors, I suppose you could do something to make the lights have more of a relationship to the existing. That's just.
Yeah, no, I think we should, we should do that. I think we should try to get some similarity between the lights and the door. I'm just saying that it needs to be two doors, it can't be an overhead door.
Sure.
Yeah, I like Jordan's idea too of trying to keep it symmetrical, even if it's new material.
Okay, I will close the public hearing, I think you've heard the response from the architect. Jordan, do you have any more comments?
No, that was the key, that was the key thought I had, but thank you and thank you, Mr. Miller.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Catherine?
Yeah, I'd like to respond. I support what Jordan is saying and if Mr. Miller can figure out a method to give it a better symmetrical look at that, that struck me immediately just as it did Jordan. And I think it would make a better presentation on the front. This house is really a fine example of early craftsman architecture and I'm glad that we're adding it to the inventory and I thought the consultant's job was, she did a marvelous job. She was very thorough and her assessments were very interesting to read, I think, for all of us. And first, I don't have any concern about converting the north bedroom to a garage. I was having a conversation with a former board member, Julie Went, about this and she reminded me that some years ago, the the board did allow a garage conversion on a historic property to be converted to a kitchen. So this wouldn't be precedent-setting in in any way. And I also think that we do, are removing some materials, historic materials, but I don't think they would detract from what is, what is there now. And while there will be more extensive window glazing on the rear of the property on the on the west, it isn't occurring on the primary street elevation. And I guess the one area that I had concerns about were the proposed changes to the front fence. And I'm glad to hear Mr. Miller, who I think did a very good job working on this property, that he will not be in favor of removing the entire fence, but to just remove the portion that will allow for the garage to be used and maintained. And on the whole, I think this is a very good historic remodel.
One thought I had was on the retaining wall, since there is going to be Carmel stone in the back and there apparently was Carmel stone on the front at one point, it looked like, maybe the, I'll just throw out the the suggestion of Carmel stone instead of masonry on the retaining walls going to the garage in the front.
So Thomas, do you have any comments?
Sure. I appreciate the long staff and Meg Clovis have gone too, is always a very thorough job. Thank you. I also think this is, this is an easy project to review, even with all the circumstance of all the changes because Elick Miller's office, they know the guidelines. So it makes it a pretty easy review, given the quality of the documents, and I appreciate that. To me, behind this, the whole idea behind this building is the Carmelo Street elevation. Everything else is completely secondary. So having said that, the removal of the the wooden fireplace, it's obvious that the stone was removed when you look at the size of the chimney. So I don't have any problem with the removal of the fireplace and repositioning of it. Rear gables, it's an improvement. The the offset gables looked like a popular gimmick in the early 70s. I liked the fact they balanced it off on the back. I think that's an improvement. The garage conversion to the garage in the front, they're entitled to have covered parking. I think they've got a good solution and I respect the comments of the other board members about refinement of glass lights in that door, if they want to go with that. I think that's a great idea. The clad versus wood windows, the clad windows proposed to the west makes sense from a maintenance standpoint. That, to me, that's not part of the historic resource, those additions on the back. I think those are fine. Replacement of the plywood on the back, because you could see that at 30 feet away with real one bias, I think that's an improvement over that remodel area, I think that's good. The last issue, the, oh, permanent encroachment for the driveway, condition seven, I think that's, they should get that from the council, that makes sense. The one thing where I I differ in my opinion about the fence in the front, we stood there very closely and looked at this and maybe the architect can respond. What it appears at least from what we're looking at is that fence, it does contribute to the landscape, it's a defining architectural element, but it is not original. In fact, I I don't even think that it's 30 years old. If you look at how it's constructed and the size of the lumber and they're using short, not ungalvanized Phillips tip screws, you couldn't even buy those 50 years ago. But at the southeast corner, I observed traces of what I think is the original fence, which were very small battens with infill panel. And you can see there's a very small section of it that goes back to the house. I would support the idea of if they want to, if they want to have gates on the driveway, as even tenant swing gates, I'm fine with that. I could support the idea of the whole fence being replaced, just based on my observation of the materials, knowing that it's not historic, but if they retain that essential design, replacement of a nonhistoric element in similar fashion, I could support that. Because I couldn't see any evidence of that fence being part of the original fence. It obviously was newly constructed. It's just a fine, fine point, but I think the fence is an important design feature. I also think that the fence going across in front of the garage, in whatever form, I think that's better than having a gap because that street elevation is about a continuous elevation of a fence that defines private space. I like it with the gates. Those are all my comments.
Thank you, Thomas. I guess I'll start on the fence as well. I mean, Thomas and I both observed the fact that it did appear that the fence was not original. I think there's no way to tell whether this was actually an original design, however. So if it was rebuilt and rebuilt in kind, I can imagine it because maybe that's exactly what happened originally. It's really hard to tell. And I think I am fine with the the new gates across the garage as well. I think Jordan made a good comment, maybe doing the garage doors in a more custom way so that the actual window lights could have a more, a pattern that's more similar to the existing, but not exactly like it, so it can be differentiated. I think the fact that they've removed this added chimney that's clad in wood actually improves the aesthetics of the street elevation. And on the backside, I think they really did clean it up and made it much nicer than it was, even though that was not part of the historic fabric of the house. Other than that, I think it's, it's a nice project and I would support the determination that it meets the Secretary Interior standards. Any other comments in the board? Or do we have a motion?
Jordan, what are your thoughts on this?
You know, I, I think, honestly, I was taken aback when the first time I saw the design based on the rear remodel, but as I looked at it, I, Thomas, I didn't articulate it in my mind as well as you did, but I agree that that, you know, doesn't detract from the front elevation and, you know, is probably an improvement overall on the, both on the overall design and on the living space. I, I mean, I had an issue about the gap in the fence where I think, and I didn't, I'm not as observant as you guys, so I didn't see that the fence was a rebuild. I do actually think that there, it would seem kind of unsynchronous, if that's even a word, to have that big gap in the fence. And understand that, you know, the design constraints maybe can't be worked to put that back into place if the original fence is kept, which, you know, I'm under the assumption that it should be based largely on the fact that it's there now and and appears to be congruent with the house. But I agree with you that that big gap, to me, is a little bit disconcerting.
Eric, can I ask a question of the applicant?
Sure. I'll open up the public hearing for that.
Okay. Going back, I looked at the original site plan, it looks like it indicated that it was seven feet from the front property line. And I'm just wondering, about seven feet? There it is. Okay, so if they propose biparting gates, how do you get in the garage? If you've got seven feet and you've got, say, nine foot wide driveway, 10 foot wide, call it nine feet, that's a four and a half foot gate, you've got an eight foot wide garage door, how do you get a car in if you've got to open the gates and then you have biparting garage doors, they're going to be at least four feet wide? Your shirt will be two and a half feet. That's my question.
The gates would have to open now.
Gates would have to, how do you do that with a slope? You're going to do a vertical bottom on the gate?
There's a cam on it.
You put a cam on it?
They're holding the cams up and then closing the cam down.
Okay, answers my question. So they'd be out swinging?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Can I say one more thing too?
Sure, go ahead.
Maybe potentially a better option is a sliding gate. We could do that. Now, we couldn't do it in one piece because it's more than 10 feet to the gate. Is that, is that, is that going 10 feet right there?
Yes, it's gone 10 feet.
Yeah, so another potential is a sliding gate. So I'd like to have both options available to me, if that's possible.
Any other questions of the architect? Okay, I'll close the public hearing once again. Catherine, are you saying something? You're muted still.
Yes, I would agree with Jordan. The fences there, it may be nonhistoric, we don't know how how it got there or what, how old it is, but it does, it does, it is compatible with the the front elevation of the house and I don't see any reason to tear it all down and start with something brand new. I think that would detract from the historic. I think that would detract from the historic property. But I do like the idea of the gate, if it can be accomplished, but I wouldn't recommend in my, I wouldn't be supportive of removing the entire fence and making a big change. There is a Japanese feeling to it, as the original had. So however old it is, maybe it was rebuilt in this fashion. So who knows?
Okay. So I guess, yeah, go ahead, Thomas. I was just going to say I was going to entertain a motion to see if we can move forward with it.
If I could just ask one question first. Catherine, I concur with what you're saying, but I'll ask, I'll just beg the question. If, because the fence that's there, by the way it's fastened, if there's enough evidence there that it's not original, it's a very important design feature on this building. It really is. I would suspect that it was probably replacing the original that seems to be a little bit of a trace of in the southeast corner. If they were able to replace the fence in like kind, so that it's rough-sawn material, that you wouldn't see the Phillips head screws that are rusting through the paint, so that it was constructed in a way consistent with the original fence, would you accept that if, from an architectural standpoint, they needed to be able to do that to correct the grade? You can see the grade buries the bottom six, eight inches of the fence. If they could replace it in like kind, knowing, at least on the evidence, it's not historic, could you support that?
Well, it sounds like that would work.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I think it's the most distinctive element, other than the roof profile at the living room. It's very unique.
Yeah, I would not support replacing it with something else.
No.
Be replaced, it would need to be replaced in kind.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Do people have a motion for this application? Thomas, you've kind of spoke the most, I think, if you want to.
Well, can I ask before, before a motion is made, can I, it seems like we've made a lot of ifs and ands and maybes and things like that, as we've addressed these issues and kind of put things back into the owner and the architect's court. Should we maybe revisit this if there, if time is not, you know, critical for some reason or another? Is this something that, you know, based on our comments, the architect wants to revisit with the owners and then come back with a modified recommendation?
What would, I guess, what would you suggest he come back with, other than what is presented? Other than, obviously, you had some comments on the doors, the garage?
Yeah, we had some comments on the doors. We talked about potentially replacing the gates. Carol talked about recommendations for the retaining walls and, you know, so it's not, it's not altering design in its entirety, but there are some significant elements that seem to be up in the air where we've allowed some latitude to look at different options, so I'm wondering if, if maybe that part is, if we go ahead with the main portions of the house, and then we revisit the front, you know, fence gate, garage, the next time we convene.
Well, let's see. Catherine, can you comment on exactly, or maybe I could bring it to the architect again, too, but what are they actually proposing right now? They are proposing sections of the new fence and a swinging gate, which the architect would like to have the option to do a sliding gate if possible. They are proposing to build it back in kind, as far as I can see. Is that your understanding?
It's slightly differentiated, but it's the same exact pattern. But it's slightly differentiated, because it would be new, new construction. I think Meg Clovis clarifies in the addendum to the report, though, that when something's being, when the whole thing is being replaced, it's supposed to be exactly in kind. When just a little section of it is being replaced, then just that section would need to be differentiated, so that you can tell the original material from the new.
And they are, gate?
Yeah.
I mean, the driveway gates are differentiating in their proposal, slightly?
In this particular proposal, the whole gate is differentiated, so they would need to correct that. And it depends on whether they're, if they're replacing the whole fence, then the whole fence would need to be identical to the original, except for the gates, because the gate's an alteration.
I would be happy with that, but I think that's something that we could probably have staff review. I'm not sure that we need to bring it back to the board, but...
I respect what Jordan is asking for. I just jotted down what I think are the points, the details. Garage door, fence, and gates. Replacement of siding on plywood to railboards on the back, and the retaining walls on the side of the driveway contingent upon staff review. I could see supporting a motion for approval of the conditions, with the condition that the garage door and the fence are submitted back to staff for consistency with the existing design. If that sounds good. It allows the bulk of the project to proceed, but still gives us final review on the, on those essential character-defining elements on the Carmelo Street side.
Okay, but that's administrative review, so.
But it could be administrative review.
Okay. And then I think, no one's really talked about the, what Eric brought up about replacing more of the siding on the areas which were additions originally. And I'm fine with that, since they were not original. In fact, I think it's better to have a differentiation in the siding for the ones that are clearly not part of the original. Okay, so do you want to restate your motion? I guess I should let Jordan comment, too. Does that sound reasonable, Jordan?
Yeah, absolutely. Sounds like a good solution.
Catherine, what do you think? Sounds like a plan?
I think that sounds good, and I'd be in favor of going ahead.
Okay. Eric, do you want me to make a motion?
I would love it.
All right. I move for approval of DS 19-298 with the condition as submitted for consistency with the Secretary of Interior's guidelines, with the conditions that the garage door design, front fence, and gates, and retaining walls in the right of way be examined by the architect and resubmitted for staff review.
Okay, and then I think the thought was that the fence would be built back in kind?
Fence built back in like.
Except for the driveway gate, which would need to be somewhat differentiated, but in a similar style.
Yes.
Which I think Catherine had stipulated.
Margie, do you want to read that back when you're ready?
It's a little, a little bit confusing. So you made a motion to approve the determination of consistency with the standard of interior standards for the treatment of historic properties, DS 19-298, for the conversion of a bedroom on the front northeast portion of the residence to an attached garage, and the remodel of several windows, doors, two rear gables on the residence listed on the historic, city's historic inventory. With staff's special conditions, and the condition that the fence on the front is placed, replaced in kind, with same design, with the exception of the gates, which sounds like there will be sliding gates, and those should be differentiated, along with the the retaining walls and garage door. How did I do?
You did a much better job than I did with that.
Okay.
And then this could be referred back to staff for administrative approval, as long as it is consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards.
Okay.
And if staff wants board feedback on that at the next hearing, then we could do that.
I was going to ask Catherine, is that, do you think that's clear enough, Catherine, since you'd be reviewing it?
Yeah, I think that's clear. Again, the tanning wall, garage door, so that it's similar to the, to the original, but differentiated, meaning the window, and the the fence can be replaced in kind, except for the driveway gate.
Okay.
And the driveway gate can be added back on, but differentiated.
I want to add one thing to the motion, that with the fence and gate design, that they submit sufficient detail to describe the material, texture, and joinery.
Okay.
And also, Eric decided that, I mean, said that they could either do sliding gate or opening gate, depending on how they could work it, right? And he wanted leeway in that regard.
That's fine with me.
Okay. So.
And did you want to specify, really quick, did you want to specify what type of, I think you mentioned no Phillips head showing rough-sawn material, or did you want to get that specific, or do you want to just leave it up to the architect?
I would, I would leave it up to the architect to replace in like kind, and all I would say is specify the material, the finish, the texture of the wood, and the joinery.
Okay.
Because I think Catherine's concern there is that we don't want it to look like a new copy that it have consistent character with the rest of the building.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jordan, thank you. So any other comments? Then I will call for the roll.
One other thing, I'm sorry. We wanted the windows to look similar on the garage door to the other side, and we didn't really spell that out specifically.
I think that was, we talked, I think that was in the motion, wasn't it, Thomas? And I think the point was that have a relationship but not, but be differentiated, since it is a new element.
Margie, did I, was there any text in there about the glass lights in the garage door?
You just said garage, well, no, you did not.
Okay. Then I amend my motion to include consideration of glass lights compatible with the southeast wing of the house.
Okay. Jordan, do you accept that as a?
I do. Resecond.
Thanks, Jordan.
Okay, I think we have it now, so. I'll call the roll.
Okay. Gromen?
Hi.
Golpieri?
Yes.
Okay, Paul?
Hi.
Good.
Hi.
Dyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Take me off. Oh, you're on. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Thank you for your consideration, and we'll look forward to doing this remodel, and I think, you know, we'll certainly be working with the staff to make sure it's consistent with the spirit of what we're all trying to do here.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, good evening. Okay, that being our only order of business, we'll move on to the director's report from Marnie.
Well, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and happy new year. We won't be meeting again until January, so just wanted to send my well wishes to everyone, and that's all I have this evening.
Okay. And there was, I guess for the next meeting will be, there was discussions about the CLG and how we're doing with that, and we can bring that up later. I know you've got a busy plate this month, so. Let's see, I'll move on to board member announcements.
Well, here's an announcement. For those that aren't aware, Eric may be stepping aside as chairman of this board, but he's coming on as president of the AIA Monterey Bay chapter of the American Institute of Architects.
Oh.
So he's going to be crazy busy.
Congratulations, Eric.
More volunteer work, yay.
I've got one other quick announcement. We've sent an email, but the Carmel Heritage Society has put out a request for photographs taken anytime during our COVID shutdown. You know, happy or sad or tragic. We are making history here, as every American city really is, on how we've coped with it. And Catherine, you may have recalled the photograph taken back in, what, 1917, of the people walking away from the water trough with masks on in the Architecture of Carmel. We're going to use that piece for a unspecified date for an upcoming exhibition, continuing on our them and now theme, using that photograph from 1919. And we're asking for submissions of photographs from anyone taken during this year about what it's like living in Carmel during this pandemic, and we're looking for it to be a very full submission. We may actually, actually have a juried submission by local photographers. And it will be an exhibition that would be available initially in a museum, maybe sometime this spring, and then available online. So if you have any photographs that you'd like to submit, you can just go to our website, carmelheritage.com, and it tells you how you can make your submission. There's no fee. We just want to see what people have seen for the year.
I think that's very ambitious of the society, and good luck to you, and that'll be a good exhibit. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't thank Marnie for all the hard work she's done during this period, which has not been easy in any shape, shape or form. Thank you, Marnie, very much for all you've done to keep us on track.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Marnie.
Okay. So any other announcements?
And thank you, Eric, for your leadership all these years. You'll still be here, but in a little different role.
Yeah. Thank you, Carol. Okay. I don't think we have any subcommittee reports. There's future agenda items we can, anyone want to suggest any agenda items for the coming year?
Marnie, when would you like to resume our conclusion of the contact statement? February?
I would certainly love to get back on track with that as soon as possible. Was also looking at the next grant opportunity from the state to supplement that effort. So I think I'll be better prepared in January, to maybe have a tentative timeline that we can discuss on how to get that done.
If you can just reach out to Eric and I when you're ready to talk about that. So your, because your load is going to be lightened a little bit by mid-month, and I'm sure the consultant will probably be wondering, you know, is the ball in our court or not, so we can conclude that as quickly as possible.
Sure.
All right.
Okay.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, yeah.
Happy holidays, happy new year.
Happy new year.
On the 25th, this time.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Great job, everyone. Bye.
Bye.
Good evening.